I'm going to call this meeting of the Carson City School Board back to order. We are all socially distanced and with current conditions, it's probably going to be necessary for us to remove our masks so we could hear each other. We're having audio problems in the community center and that's going to infect some. If you're trying to view this meeting through a Zoom link, you're not going to get all of the information. So we recommend you go to our school district's website, carsoncityschools.com, and click on the school board link and view meeting and you'll be able to view our current meeting. So you might hear audio come in and out. We're not exactly sure why that is happening. So we are going to, I'm going to ask that we move on with, adopt, would you say revised agenda?
Let's do the flag salute first.
Yeah. Please join me in the flag salute.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as I was saying, due to some of the problems we're having, we're going to delay any of the agenda items which, or I'm proposing that we delay any agenda item that is not time sensitive. And so Ryan, would you suggest we name what numbers we're going to go through or just table the items we're not going to do?
I think either way is fine. I think so everybody's clear. You may want to say we're going to go forward with agenda items, whichever one you're going to use and the rest will be tabled.
Okay.
And that'll be reflected in the motion to approve.
Okay. So I'm proposing that we move forward with agenda items one, two. We're going to move 13 up, five, six, seven, eight, 10, 11, 12, 14, 19, 20, and 23. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to discuss or include those items on tonight's agenda as outlined by President Walker.
We have a motion from Joe. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a trust, a second by trustee Varney, Varner. Any public discussion or any discussion from the trustees?
President Walker.
Yes.
May I suggest that the motion be conditioned on tabling and continuing, continuing the items that were removed for another meeting?
Would you agree to those changes?
Yes, I agree to those changes.
Richard, do you agree to those changes?
Yes.
All right, so we are tabling and continuing those items at our next scheduled meeting. Any other discussion from trustees or Mr. Stokes? Okay, any public comment about our agenda, Renee? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda will be item number 13. Public comment will be accepted, and I'll just preface this, telephonic participation is not working at the time. And so we are only going to be able to receive public comment if you email that in. And so after I read our statement, I'm going to give us a short recess to give you time to send in any email comments you would like included in the record of this meeting and heard by the trustees. So public comment will be accepted through virtual participation by email at publiccomment@carson.k12.nv.us. Comments may be bamed by members of the public on any matter within the authority of this board. Please note that public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action before action is taken on such items, and members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at the time they are being considered. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such a matter until the matter is placed on an agenda for action at a meeting of the board. In making public comment, speakers are asked to identify themselves for the record. Speakers are further asked to refrain from speaking over each other participating by telephone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes, whether in writing or oral, and not to simply repeat comments made by others. This is for discussion only. I'm going to call for a five-minute recess to allow people to send in public comment. Again, the email is publiccomment@carson.k12.nv.us. The meeting is adjourned, or is recessed. I'm going to call the meeting, this meeting of the Carson City School Board back to order. Do we have any public comment emailed in?
No, Mr. Walker.
All right. Seeing none, we will move on to item number five, discussion. Go ahead.
Do you want to note that you're going to allow it later?
Oh, and I will note that we're going to allow an additional public comment at the end of the meeting to give people a little bit more time to send in those email comments. Item number five, discussion on possible action on election of officers of the Board of Trustees, including Board President, Vice President, and Clerk for the ensuing year. This is our possible action. So we will start with President, and I will ask for any nominations for President of the Board.
I would like to nominate Joe Cassioppo.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion for trustee Cassioppo by Richard and seconded by Laurel. Do we have any other nominations for Board President? Seeing none, I'll ask for any board discussion? Seeing none? Any public comment emailed in regarding Board President, Renee?
No public comment, Mr. Walker.
All right, I will call the question. All those in favor?
President Walker.
Yes.
Just for a matter of procedure, you might want to ask the nominee if he accepts the nomination.
He doesn't have that option.
Mike, Mike's ready to hand it over.
Mr. Cassioppo, do you accept the nomination?
I do, yes.
All right, so I will call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. President, and I look forward to the great things to come this year. And at this time, I will hand the meeting over to your able hands.
Thank you, trustee Walker, President Walker. I just wanted to quickly thank trustee Walker for his term as President. I think he did an exceptional job. He brings a lot of experience to the board, and I'm glad he's still going to remain part of our board. I think we are, you know, we're all better for it. So thanks for everything you've done, and I look forward to continuing to serve with you.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, when I, when I think real about this year, in a lot of ways, I think for some people, the job of a school trustee feels and seems almost ceremonial. And if anything, I think one thing that's really come to light this year, especially for all of us, we've really, it's really become clear to us that the decisions we make truly impacts this community in ways that in normal years, we don't even second guess. And so I'm very proud to be part of this board. One of the things that I love is that even when we disagree, we do so respectfully, and we are able to make decisions and move forward in a professional manner. And so that just makes me so proud of this school board and serving this district. And so thank you for the, the congratulations or praise.
No, you're welcome. Well deserved, and I'll do my best to fill those shoes. So with that, we're going to move on to nominations for Vice President and then for Clerk. So I'd like to ask the Board if we have any nominations for Vice President.
Mr. President, I'll move that we nominate Richard Varner for Vice President.
Second that.
Sorry about that. Okay, so we have a nomination by trustee Walker, a second by trustee Carini. Do we have any board discussion? Seeing none, how about any public comment related to Vice President?
Joe, just you might want to make sure that Mr. Varner accepts the nomination.
I will, yeah. I was going to let him sweat a little while. So trustee Varner, do you accept the nomination for Vice President?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I'll call the vote. All in favor of nominating trustee Varner for Vice President?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, congratulations, trustee Varner.
Thank you, guys.
We'll move on to Clerk. Any nominations? Would someone like to make a nomination for Clerk for the school board?
I would like to nominate Laurel Crossman.
Okay, we've got a trustee Wilkie. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Walker for trustee Wilkie as Clerk. Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Crossman. Sorry about that. It's bad enough I can't hear, now I can't see. Okay, so we have a nomination, we have a second. Any further discussion by the Board? Any public comment? Okay, and trustee Crossman, do you accept this nomination?
Yes, I do.
Great. Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Congratulations, trustee Crossman.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move on to item six, discussion on possible action on designation of a day, place, and time for regular meetings of the Board of Trustees for ensuing year. This is for possible action. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I move that except as otherwise noted, due to special circumstances, the Carson City School District Board of Trustees designate the second and fourth Thursdays of the month as regular meeting days, 6:00 p.m. for legally allowed closed sessions, and 7:00 p.m. for open session in the Robert Bob Kroll Boardroom of the Carson City Community Center, 851 East Williams Street, Carson City, Nevada. Now, if that doesn't sound like the sweetest thing I got to read tonight.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Ramirez. Any board comment?
Just, just one little comment that we use the workshops so that our meetings don't go late because we're still starting at 7 o'clock. I would like to keep doing that.
And I'll just add, just to avoid any possible confusion, we're currently meeting in the theater, but we're expecting to be back in the Sierra Room, which is now the Bob Kroll Room, at our next board meeting, which is January 26th. So we have a motion and a second, and we've had discussion by the Board. Any public comment?
No public comment, Mr. Cassioppo.
Okay, all will call that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Move on to item seven, I think. Let me turn the page. Item seven will be discussion on possible action on the annual adoption and reaffirmation of existing bylaws and policies of the Board of Trustees, again for possible action.
I'll make a motion.
Trustee Carini?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the adoption and reaffirmation of existing bylaws and policies.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Carini, second by trustee Walker. Any board comment? Any public comment, Renee?
No public comment, Mr. Cassioppo.
Okay, we'll call this, we'll call this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item eight. Hold on to your seats here, it's a little long one. Discussion on possible action on annual authorization for the Carson City School District to apply for and manage federal, state, foundation, and private funding, including but not limited to, A, programs authorized under the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015, to include titles I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV; B, Public Law 94-142, the Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act; C, Public Law 109-270, the Carl Perkins Vocational Education Act; D, Pre-Kindergarten; E, Nutrition; F, Fresh Fruits and Vegetables; G, School Safety; H, Zoom English, excuse me, English Learner Funding; I, At-Risk Counseling Services; J, State Career and Technical Education; K, College and Career Readiness; 1, Read by, or excuse me, L, Read by Grade III; and M, the Great Teachers and Leaders Fund. This is for possible action.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees designate Mr. Richard Stokes, Mrs. Tasha Fuson, and Mrs. Valerie Dockery as the authorized representatives for any and all federal and state grants.
Second.
Second.
No public comment, Mr. Cassioppo.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we're going to skip item nine, as we discussed earlier. Item 10, discussion on possible action on the appointment of trustees to serve on various committees and associations, including the following for the ensuing year. This is for possible action, and we're going to be discussing Director on the Nevada Association of School Boards, Alternate Director on the Nevada Association of School Boards, Member for Carson City Parks and Rec Commission Committee, the Debt Management Commission, Partnership Carson City, Legislative Liaison. We are going to, and we'll discuss in a moment why, but we're going to remove representatives to Superintendent Board Policy Review Committee, and also Representative to Wellness Committee. And then we're going to continue, including Representatives to Superintendent School Naming Committee, Representatives to Superintendent's Joint Advisory Committee, Representative to Carson City Schools Foundation, Representative to Student Attendance Review Board, and Representative on the Emergency Operations Development Committee.
Mr. President, could I request that we discuss with Mr. Stokes the removal of the two committees?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
We'll discuss attention later.
Just, just a thought, guys, because that was actually the agenda item under nine that we skipped and we tabled it. So perhaps we can discuss that at our next meeting when we're bringing that back, but at this point, we could just leave the existing representatives on those two committees since it's still in our bylaws.
Or we could put people on those committees, and then if we decide to get rid of them with that policy, then, then we could go back to that.
That's where I was going with that, is we would do that and then we would remove them later. I just wanted to make the Board aware, and I'm going to take this time for Superintendent Stokes to explain why we're eliminating those two committee positions.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. As you know, some, many of you are on the Board when we've added some of these superintendents committees. And in some cases, those committees are being, or the work that those committees were established to do is actually being completed in another format. And I'll just use, for example, the Wellness Committee. It's been a longstanding committee and it's identified as a required committee in statute. However, instead of actually meeting regularly, we've been meeting quarterly in our community PLC. So the work is actually being done, so it's essentially a redundant committee. So it was my thinking that we could discuss that as, as a Board and see whether or not you felt it was necessary to have that in the bylaws. For the other committee, several years back, we had implemented the Superintendent's Committee, which was a Board Policy Review Committee, and that committee in and of itself really has been stagnant. We have, when it's, when we found the need to bring policy or regulation in front of the Board, we have done that as a process where we bring it in front of the Board, there's two readings, rather than asking Board members to come together and to review sections, for example, of our policy manual. So again, it's a way that we have been doing business thus far, and it's up to you if we want to continue in that fashion or if we want to take some other action.
Well, thank you very much. And again, that is a agenda item that we said we were going to table, so we'll have that discussion at a later meeting. For now, we're going to go ahead and fill all the positions.
And President Cassioppo, just so everybody's clear with the removal of Agenda Item Nine, that's on the policy to formally remove those committees, you don't have to fill those two positions tonight. You're not, you're not under a duty to fill any of them, and so you can fill the ones that are requested to be filled and have the agenda item on the policy at the, at the next meeting on whether or not to keep those. If the Board decides to keep them at that point, you can have another agenda item to fill them then.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So with that, let's go down the list. The first one is the Director of the Nevada Association of School Boards, currently, I believe that's Mike. Trustee Walker?
And I'm happy to continue on in that position.
Okay. Okay. So trustee Walker's interested in continuing, is there anybody else who has interest? Otherwise, we'll, we'll keep Mike on there. Okay. Now we have the Alternate Director of the Nevada Association of School Boards, which was Richard. Do you want to maintain that, or?
Yes, no one else wants it, I'd like to maintain that.
Okay, so trustee Varner has an interest, is anybody else interested? Seeing none, we'll, we'll keep trustee Varner on there. Thanks, Richard. A third one is Member of the Carson City Parks and Recreation Committee. That is Stacy, you're currently on there?
I'd like to stay on, if that's okay with everybody, if any, unless somebody else has a strong interest.
Okay, seeing none, Stacy, thank you. Fourth one is Member of the Debt Management Commission, and Richard, I believe you're on that one.
Yes, and there again, I'll maintain it if no one else would like to do it.
Okay, we'll keep Richard on there. Next is Member of Partnership Carson City, and I believe Lupe, you're on there?
Yes, I would like to stay on that committee.
And I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, want to stay on?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody good with that? Perfect. Legislative Liaison, currently that's Laurel and me.
I'm happy to stay on that.
And I am as well, so unless anybody else is interested.
Or maybe no one will be down there, and we'll all be calling in, who knows?
Okay, no other interests, so we'll stay on there, Joe and Laurel. Next we have Representative of the Superintendent's Board Policy Review Committee, and that was Dawn and Stacy, correct?
I also am interested in serving on that committee.
Okay.
So I'll step off, because Dawn's not on anything yet.
Okay, so are we saying Dawn and Lupe? Okay, thank you to you both, and Stacy, thank you to you. Representative of the Superintendent's School Naming Committee, and it looks like that was, is that Mike and Stacy?
Yeah, it's a lot of work, but I'll be happy to stay on there.
One of our toughest committees.
We are actually in the middle of one.
Oh, we really are.
Okay, Mike and Stacy, perfect. Next, Representative of the Superintendent's Joint Advisory Committee, and Laurel, that is you currently?
It is me, but I also noticed that Dawn was on two of the committees that are looking to be excluded, so if, if you would like to do that, I would let you.
Yeah, I'd be happy to take that on.
Okay, so Dawn?
Because I, I do believe that there's a good possibility of both of my committees being eliminated, so.
All right, well, thank you. Representative to Carson City Schools Foundation, that's typically the president, as I understand it? And I, right, and so I am happy to do that, and obligated as well, so I'm happy to do it. Representative to the Wellness Committee, we don't have to fill that, but currently, yeah, that was Dawn, so I think, why don't we, we'll move on. Representative to Student Attendance Review Board, and that was Lupe and Stacy.
Yes, I would like to stay on that one.
Somebody else wants to be an alternative, I have no problem with that either.
So, sorry, so both of you are okay?
I think Laurel wants to be on, so I'm okay with that.
Stacy was saying she'd give up the, or, I'm okay to be an alternative, Stacy doesn't want to.
Because she doesn't have any either right now, or you just have the liaison one.
Okay, so we'll do Lupe, yeah, Lupe and Laurel? All right. And then we have Representative on the Emergency Operations Development Committee, and that is me, and I'm happy to stay on there, but does anyone not have a, a position? Did we cover everybody? Okay. So we have those filled, this is a, this is for possible action, so does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll move that we make the following appointments. Director of Nevada Association of School Boards, Mike Walker. Alternate Director of Nevada Association of School Boards, Richard Varner. Member Carson City Parks and Recreation Committee, Stacy Wilkie. Debt Management Commission, Richard Varner. Partnership Carson City, Lupe Ramirez. Legislative Liaisons, Laurel Crossman and Joe Cassioppo. Representative to the Superintendent's Board Policy Review Committee, John Karini and Lupe Ramirez. Representatives to the Superintendent's School Naming Committee, Stacy, Stacy Wilkie and Mike Walker. Representative to the Superintendent's Joint Advisory Committee, Don Karini. Representative to the Carson City Schools Foundation, Joe Cassioppo. Representative to the Student Attendance Review Board, Lupe Ramirez, Laurel Crossman. Representative on the Emergency Operations Development Committee, Joe Cassioppo.
Okay, so we have a motion by trustee Walker, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Varner, any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment?
No public comment, Mr. Cassioppo.
All right, so we'll call the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you, everybody. Moving on to item 11. Discussion on possible action on the appointment of trustees to serve as individual liaisons to schools within the district. This again is for possible action, and we'll start with Fritsch Elementary School, currently that is Laurel Crossman.
I, I'm happy to stay there, this is, I have my, my last kid has six more months at Fritsch, so I'm happy to stay there.
Okay. Sorry, Mike, I didn't look that way, are you okay with that? Borderwick Bray Elementary School currently is trustee Varner?
Yes, I'd like to remain if no one else wants it.
Okay. We have Fremont Elementary School currently is Laurel Crossman.
And I'd like to stay there, too.
Okay. Mark Twain Elementary School is currently Lupe Ramirez.
If someone else is interested in that school, I'd like to choose a different school.
Okay.
Lupe, do you want to trade, I have Seelager, so I could do Mark Twain, and you could do Seelager this year?
I'll take that, thank you.
Okay.
You will take that? Okay, so Mike, you're going to do Mark Twain then? And Seelager, 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 there we go, will be Lupe. And then, just so anybody knows, since it's down at the bottom, I've been doing Carson High for quite a while, so if anybody wants to swap schools when we get there, I'm open to it, but we'll just keep going down the list, Empire Elementary School is currently Lupe?
Yes, I will keep that.
You keep that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Seelager is Lupe, so we'll move to Carson Middle School, which is currently Richard Varner?
There again, I'll keep it unless somebody else wants to.
Okay. Thanks, Richard. We have Eagle Valley Middle School, which currently is Dawn Karini.
I'd like to keep that unless somebody wants it.
Okay, Dawn, thank you. Carson High School is currently me. I'm happy to keep it, but I'm also happy to give someone else a turn.
I share it with you, I'd like, I have a student there, so I'll, I'll be happy to maintain that as well.
Okay, so we can share that, that's great, thanks, Dawn. Okay, Pioneer High School is Stacy, currently Stacy. Do you want to keep that, or is anyone else interested?
I'd keep it if interested, or is that, would you rather go to Pioneer and switch Carson, because you have been at Carson High a while?
Yeah, I can do that, you want to do that?
Switch?
Does that work for you?
Yeah, I'll still be involved there, so.
Okay, yeah, I know, we're, I guess for the record, we're, we're not, we, we certainly can visit schools if we want to, you're not locked out of a school because you're not named it, but we just have a designated representative, is all it means. So I'll remove myself from the high school, put Stacy, and then I'll go down for Pioneer. And then we have Bray Building, the Early Childhood Center, that's currently me, and I'm happy to keep that, but if someone else is interested, I could swap or share.
I could do that, Joe.
You're interested?
Yeah.
Richard, you seem like you were interested? You guys can have it, I could step back, too. Okay. So we'll put Mike in and Richard. Okay, so we have them filled, now if, do we have anybody who wants to make an official motion?
I'll make the motion. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the following appointment of trustees to serve as individual liaisons to the following schools. Laurel, Fritsch Elementary School, Richard, Borderwick Bray Elementary School, Laurel, Fremont Elementary School, Mike, Mark Twain Elementary School, Lupe, Empire Elementary School, Lupe, Al Seelager Elementary School, Richard, Carson Middle School, Dawn, Eagle Valley Middle School, Dawn and Stacy, Carson High School, Joe, Pioneer High School, and Mike, the Bray Building Aborastory Early Childhood Center.
And I think for clarification, the Bray Building Early Childhood Center is Mike and Richard, you guys are going to share that? Did I get that right, or did I get that wrong?
I don't think it matters, I don't.
I want to just give to Mike.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Laurel, second by Mike. Any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment?
No public comment, Mr. Cassioppo?
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Hearing none opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to item, make sure I didn't lose sight here, item 12, association reports, do we have any association reports?
I'm sorry, Mr. Cassioppo?
No, that's okay.
No, no.
Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item 14, again, 13 was public comment, and we moved that up earlier in the agenda, so 14 is informational update regarding the Eagle Valley Middle School traffic study completed by Manheart Consulting, and this is for discussion only, and I believe we have Mark Roder. And while they're getting set up, anybody listening from home, if it sounds like I'm yelling, I apologize, but again, we can't hear each other in here, so I am yelling, so I apologize to those if it's a little loud.
Thank you, President Cassioppo, A.J. Feeling, for the record. This evening, we have Mr. Mark Roder from Manheart Consulting, and also we have Mr. Mark Johnson in the office, or in the building, our District Capital Projects Director, to present a little bit tonight, a little bit more on the Eagle Valley Middle School Expansion Project, you've seen a couple presentations on this topic already. In the, over the past months, we've gotten some information specifically regarding traffic in that area, and, and we know that was a concern going into this project, and so Mr. Roder has been supporting the school district and trying to find some ways to, I guess, not, not only improve traffic flow, but parking, and look at, just look at some other options for the district as we continue on with this project. So I will let Mr. Roder take you through his presentation, and take any questions thereafter.
Thank you, A.J. Again, Mark Roder with Manheart Consulting. Appreciate being here, we're working with Sheen Van Wert, actually Van Wert Bogoti now, architects on the Eagle Valley Middle School, and we've been working with the architects for about six months, but in that, in the process of any school work that we do in Carson City, we have to do a special use permit with this, with Carson City. And in the process of working on the, the special use permit, special use permit goes before Planning Commission, and prior to that, we have to do the work associated with it for submitted to the city, and one of those things is a traffic analysis. We used Headway Transportation, a gentleman by the name of Lauren Chilson, who is a, does work for the city, he does kind of the citywide traffic, so it was very helpful to have him and his expertise in working towards this. One of the things that happens, so first, let's take a look at the, the site plan, this is Fifth Street in this area, Carson River Road, existing school, and then this is the location of the expansion. Just to reiterate the expansion, it's located on the, the south portion of the school, the white being the existing building, the yellow being the, the expansion. The school, the expansion includes the 10 new classrooms, two STEM labs, learning areas, courtyard area, et cetera. One of the things that occurs is we move over into some of the existing parking area that's in this area when we've, when we're doing the expansion, so we do lose 12 to 14 spaces in that area that we have to replace. So one of the things that we're doing is also looking at parking as well as the traffic in the area. So obviously, this is kind of a overview of the area. We have the roundabout at Fifth and Fairview, we have Fifth Street, Fifth Street, every, all of the area, as you're aware, discharges to this one location, so it creates some significant traffic issues. When we look at the traffic in the area, we look at, we count all of the locations in the area, we look at what's coming in and out of the school, we look at the existing traffic on the existing streets, and what we find is, we, we look from a traffic engineering standpoint at AM peaks and PM peaks, and in this case, AM peaks where people are leaving more or less this area, and they leave and head out this area, and at the same time, we have people coming in and out to the school, so the AM peak tends to be the time period that we impact the traffic in the area the most. In the afternoon, the, the people are leaving school and coming and picking up kids in the 2:30 to 3:30 range, and people generally are coming home to work in more of the 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock range, so the afternoon peak is not as big of an issue as the PM peak. So one of the things that we do is we work with the city, and we identify locations that we have to take a look at the traffic, so in this case, we looked at the Fifth Street Fairview Roundabout, we looked at the intersection of Carson River Road, Hells Bells, and Fifth Street. We looked at, this is the entrance, this is the upper entrance to the school, this used to be the primary entrance to Eagle Valley Middle School before we did the last expansion. We have a lot of people that go in and out in this location, and then we also have the drop-off lane. Across the street, there are cul-de-sacs, so there's residential cul-de-sacs across from both of those entrances, and then the traffic comes in, does drop-off, and then they exit on Hidden Meadows Drive. The buses also come in and out on Hidden Meadows Drive, and they utilize this area here for drop-off. In the analysis, when we did the counts, the traffic engineer basically said we have some major issues. One of the main items, main issues is when people leave from, on Carson River Road, and they're trying to take this left turn on Fifth Street, this area backs up, and so we have, I'm sorry, I got to back up. So what, and, and what occurs in this location is what we call a level of service F. So in traffic analysis, we look at levels of service of A through F. Basically, what that means is, how long are you Basically, what that means is, how long are you sitting there in traffic? If you, if you're, if you're very quick, you're an A, and if you're sitting for a long time, you're an F, and we have everything in between. What's acceptable in Carson City is a level of service D, and in this case, the existing condition is a level of service F, and then we turn around and we add the traffic for the addition, from the addition, and the additional students and additional traffic associated with it. So we had to really take a look at a solution for this. We also, at the entrance, the upper entrance to the school, we see people coming in and out of that location, so in other words, that's two-way. People come in, drop off, and then come back out in the same location. So saw quite a bit here, we didn't see a level of service F, only with, only in the area of people are backing up in the parking lot to get out, because trying to get a gap to get out of here is an issue. The entrance here is the drop-off, so they enter here, they go through and come back out on Hidden Meadows. This was done when we did the last expansion to the school, and actually, that tends to work pretty well. What we did see is, we saw about 60% of the traffic is using this drop-off area, and about 40% is using this drop-off. So we had to take a look at some solutions. And so what we came up with was recommended improvements, and what that includes is a right-hand turnpocket, we're from Fifth Street to Carson River Road, that the city will be doing with the Fifth Street project that they have coming up. So the city is going to be doing a Fifth Street improvement project. That'll include a lot of improvements to the pedestrian crossings, those kinds of things. We'll be looking at parking in these areas, and, but there would be construction of this right-hand turnpocket. With the school improvements, we're going to build this drop-off area, and what we're doing is, we're taking and making this a one-way movement. So the one-way movement, people, rather than coming in and out here, they'll be going one way. What that does is, it takes the traffic that before was crossing Fifth Street and creating this clog at this intersection, and is taking that traffic, getting it to move south on Carson River Road, and then left into the school, into the drop-off here. Keep in mind, this area was converted to basketball courts and kind of a play area with the last expansion, and so it's also a good location for drop-off, for the kids to go into the school site, and they would enter in this area. So what that looks like is, is a one-way, the width of the drive aisle is very similar to the existing drop-offs, so there's a drop-off lane on the right-hand side with a sidewalk that runs along here, but in addition, what we're doing is creating parking in here. So we'll have additional parking, we'll make up for the spaces that we lost, primarily teacher parking in the rear part of the school, and then they'll now be parking up in here. The other thing is, is this parking lot had a tendency to not get fully utilized. So part of the reason was, is you have the two-way traffic in and out, and it just tends to get pretty clogged. We're hoping that the one-way traffic will help alleviate some of that problem, and maybe also, with people getting diverted up here, they'll start to see those spaces and utilize them more. So between, we have roughly an additional 20 spaces, 22 spaces that we're adding, that's net over and above what we lost. So we assume we're going to have about 10 spaces required for administrative staff for the expansion, and so we're adding then another 12. Since we're building this length, this is a pretty good length, if you'll notice, this is length the drop-off here, this is significantly longer, actually, than that existing drop-off. So we're kind of doubling drop-off area, and we're also getting some of that traffic back over into here and keeping it off of Fifth Street. Now, they still have to exit here, they still will back up in that parking lot, but what we are doing is improving the movement at this intersection to only being that exit, so it will improve that as well. That in general is a solution that we've been working, and we've been working collaboratively, by the way, with RTC from Carson City, and through this whole process. As A.J. said, it's been a month, it's actually been closer to two, and we will be going to planning commission in a couple of weeks, so we want to let you guys know what's going on. Again, we've been working hard with the city to kind of come up with this solution. So I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Stacy, you have a question?
Just for clarification, so the new road that we're doing, we'll dump out on number three on that previous slide?
It'll, correct, that's correct.
So then, the other route that was dumping out on number four, what is that going to be used for?
So number four actually is an, you actually enter there, and it comes back out on Hidden Meadows Drive.
So that'll still be in?
That'll still, that won't change, we aren't changing that at all.
But we're not going to designate it a drop-off area?
No, no, we'll still utilize that area. We're going to utilize both drop-off areas, but the 40, what we've accounted for is, the 40% of people that are utilizing this will now make this movement rather than that in-and-out movement. We still accept, expect people to use the existing drop-off, as it's currently used. We're hoping to even push more people into this drop-off area.
And trustee Wilkie, I can say, as an Eagle Valley parent, the, currently, depending on the grade level of the students, they may use, there's a different drop-off area, and so this would just kind of continue. So really, you have a kind of a split between the different grade levels, not that it's perfectly split, but generally, sixth graders go kind of to one area and stuff, and they to another.
With this proposed road, is that in the budget, because it is a lot longer than we expected?
There is an increase in the, in the budget. We did have an area previously that we were looking at building parking in the front of the school. We're taking those dollars and putting them here, but because of that added length, we do have an increase in that number.
And Mr. Roder, if I recall, the, this piece was about 500,000 to 600,000, correct?
Right.
In the, the parking area that is on the, was on the north, in that north parking in the front, initially, there was going to be an additional parking area put on there, which I think was about 250,000.
Right, right.
So it's an add of about 400,000 overall. What I will say is that the, the number that was presented to you back in December when we talked about the capital improvement plan, and we spoke about some increased, increased costs, there's a, in, built into that number is a significant amount of contingency, and we know as they get closer and closer to nailing down what core construction, our CIMAR, gets closer to nailing down exactly what the project, full scope and kind of full cost will be, that contingency number will drop. So my, my expectation is that there will be enough of a drop in that contingency number that will likely almost perfectly offset. So I believe the number that you approved back in December is likely still going to be the number, and potentially still lower than what that number was.
Mark, what does that, by going through this and adding that, what does that do to the level of service there at that number three intersection?
The number three intersection has, it still backs up in the parking lot areas, so exiting the parking lot is still a level of service F, but what it does do is it improves the remainder of the intersection, so the other legs operate better.
I just wanted to make you clear to people that it, for the money, it is going to alleviate some of the traffic on East Fifth Street.
That's correct, and more important, most importantly, it eliminates this level of service F here, allows that location to flow better, so people that are trying to leave from this area are going to exit more quickly.
Good, which I know the neighbors, I would imagine during special use permit, you're going to hear from the neighbors from the south.
And we plan on, we're also going to do a neighborhood meeting prior to the planning commission, so that we'll have those discussions with them. Recognize that because the whole area exits at the one exit point, it leaves us with pretty limited solutions, but we did spend a lot of time, we looked at a roundabout in this location, we looked at a number of different things, and this became the best solution.
I think, yeah, I was just going to say, I think we don't have a lot of options in that area. One of the things I do worry about is, it seems like that's such a far, so far away from the building, at least in this picture, I can't imagine teachers parking out there. And I wonder if it's, if a lot of families aren't going to just use that lower parking lot because it's easier for the kids to get to. So I mean, I think we're going to have to look at some way to direct people into using that before it becomes a habit.
We've talked with the principal about that, and talked about, you know, actually directing, as A.J. said, some of the different grades, possibly, but keep in mind that we already see 40% of the people using this one, and that's primarily because this one has some backing up, right? So you, you already inherently have about 40% of the people using it, we kind of expect we're going to get that usage, and if we can get some additional direction, we might even get more people to come in this other one. We also feel like that once we start to utilize this more, that parking will get utilized more than it does now. Again, keep in mind that we do have this entrance point where the kids come in, you're right, from the teacher's standpoint, it is farther from the, from the school, from the actual school building, but a lot of the kids do congregate in this area before and after school, too, so.
And I just don't want, I don't want you to think I'm being critical, I just think there's some problems with it that we're going to have to work through also.
Absolutely, and again, we, we had the principal in the discussions so that we could talk about that. The other thing that I, you know, I probably didn't mention is, there's a crosswalk right here, that we have a crossing guard. That crossing guard has a tendency to create the gaps that allow people to get out of this parking area, too. So as it backs up, the crossing guard can stop the traffic on Fifth and get people out of there, so it's also, that's another tool that can be used. So yes, by no means are we saying we're solving all the traffic problems in the drop, in the AM peak there. It's, it's, but, but we are improving it pretty significantly, and obviously with the cost, as, as Ms. Wilkie mentioned.
President?
Additional questions? Richard?
Just, just a question on that, creating the new road, and then the city's responsibility to do the right-hand turn lane, is, if, is it dependent upon the city doing that, that we would get that change, or if the city decided not to do the right-hand turn lane, is it going to make more of a traffic jam there?
Yeah, the right-hand turn lane is a critical part of the improvement. We, our initial discussions with the city were because of, they're working on the Fifth Street project, and so from a timing standpoint, we're hoping all that will come together. Again, we were even looking at potentially a roundabout at that intersection, so we, the city was, is taking a look at Fifth Street, has that on their, that is in their plan, and so we are working with them to make sure that occurs.
My, I'm thinking, right, this would have to go before the planning commission for approval, then would be forwarded to the board of supervisors, or there's a couple steps in between there, I think, right?
Generally, we wouldn't go to board of supervisors unless there was an appeal, or, in other words, if the SGP is approved at planning commission, generally, we don't have to move forward to the board, unless someone requests it. Sometimes a board member will request it, sometimes it's an appeal by a neighbor, those kinds of things, but generally, if we do our job by talking to the, you know, the neighborhood ahead of time and, and working with, again, we've worked pretty hard with the city on this, so, but, but we could end up after going to board of supervisors if, for some reason, there's an appeal.
Any other questions by the board?
President Cassioppo, if I could just mention to you...
Yeah, and then after you, I had a question.
Oh, okay, sorry. I just wanted to point out that even if the Eagle Valley Expansion Project wasn't happening, and we were just looking at doing this part to improve traffic flow, this by itself still doesn't make the area perfect. There, there is a clear fundamental problem with the single ingress egress on Fifth Street, so it's, I just, I just think it's important that, that, to understand that that problem is not just something that we can solve if, if this wasn't happening, the expansion piece wasn't happening.
And this, and I was going to, I was going to mention that, you know, this is not a, even increasing kids in the school, this is not a new problem, I mean, we're going back to numbers that we've had, so we understand how those intersections are going to work. Just one question, because they mentioned it in the report, the Fifth Street Fairview existing roundabout?
Mm-hmm.
I know that's, you know, all of these are big nuts for the city to crack, but is there any talk about like a right-hand turn lane out of there to head north on?
Actually, the real solution for the roundabout is to create a two-lane roundabout.
Right.
The ultimate, that's the ultimate solution. Whether there will be some interim solutions with respect to a free ride, or, the problem is, is you have failure from each of the legs, it's not just one leg. So the real solution ultimately on the, on that roundabout is a two-lane roundabout ultimately.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I was going with that, so, okay. All right, well, I appreciate it. Do we have any other questions? If not, Mark, thanks for showing up.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, so again, we have tabled items 15 through 18. We're going to move on to item 19, and then after 19, we're going to take a break, actually, maybe Laurel, if you don't mind, why don't we take a break now for public comment, and then we'll come back and hit 19, and then the rest of it. So we're going to take about a five-minute recess, so if anybody online wants to, give them a second chance for public comment.
Thank you for allowing us that time. We're going to call the meeting back. And we are going to resume public comment. So I understand we have at least one public comment. Renee, would you mind reading our first public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Cassiopoul. This comment is from Deanna Fine. "The job of a teacher is very complex, both stressful and rewarding. Teaching is a role of leadership to which there is a mandate to be respectful and honorable, even when under duress. It is with this in mind that I come to you regarding the situation with Mr. Brian Wallace at Eagle Valley Middle School. Having worked with Mr. Wallace through OCEA, I have considered him as both a friend and a colleague. After hearing about the incident in his classroom, I would be hypocrite to hurl proverbial stones at him, as I too will admit to having occasionally made poor choices in terms of my own interactions with students. I do understand how the pressures put upon teachers lead to bad decisions that can permanently affect a child. Therefore, I could not but help to have my frame of reference be in part from the teacher's point of view. What would I have done if I too had led the monster who resides in all teachers escape as Mr. Wallace did not so long ago? Well, first of all, I would have admitted my mistake and apologized. Who is held accountable for what happened and how will the problem now be resolved? Apart from the he said, she said, there's clearly a wrong that was taken place and must be addressed. The perception of the student in terms of her feeling alienated and hurt must be taken into consideration. As a white man, Mr. Wallace doesn't get to decide the reaction of the person being marginalized. He has not experienced her reality. If she felt isolated from the rest of the class because of her identity as a Native American, there is no further questions to be asked. Therefore, how is Mr. Wallace being held accountable? How is the school board and the district being held accountable? As a privileged person, a former teacher and a concerned member of the community, I need to hold myself accountable as well. It is about time for all of us to take responsibility and deal head-on with the damage that's been done. Now, at this moment, what is the right thing to do? I'm calling you to take bold action, steps towards accountability with the issue with Mr. Wallace, and to do so with honesty and transparency. In this way, you will begin to regain the trust of CCSD students and families. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Was there any additional public comment?
No, Mr. Cassiopoul. That was the only public comment I had at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we will move on to item 19. Discussion on Possible Action to Commit the CCSD Board of Trustees to Attend the Silver State Governance Training Program. This is for possible action. And Laurel, I believe you were going to make a presentation.
Okay, so this training, the Silver State Governance Training, is training that the Nevada Association of School Boards offers to governance teams within the school districts. That would include all board members and the superintendent and any additional associate superintendents or staff members that the superintendent would like to invite to attend that training. And Deb Oliver, the executive director, Dr. Deb Oliver, the executive director of NASB has requested that we give her two possible dates. It's a two-day workshop training, a Friday and a Saturday in February that we could commit to attend and because she has the month of February open. Last year, I know five districts within the state received the training and they were able to complete through the process and they had positive things to say about the training that they went through. And so if that's something that we are interested in doing for this training, I just would like to know if there's a couple of dates that in February that work.
We...
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, do we know, do we have any idea what types of training will be covered during it?
So she said it's tailored specifically to school board members and to, and the goal is to focus on improving student outcomes. Basically, the whole premise of the training is based on the fact that our decisions as leaders matter and how can we focus all of our efforts to improving student outcomes? When I look down, my mask goes up into my eyes, so I can't read and look at the same time. So as far as specifically what it includes, I didn't give that information yet, but you can, and now I moved it away from my face, sorry. I don't know the specific workshop, but it is a lot of interactive stuff. Do you have questions?
Good question. Now, would this training fulfill our legislative training requirement as well?
Okay, the statutorily required training, I don't believe this, I don't know. So I don't want to say I don't believe, but I know that there is additional training, but I don't think this is the specific training. I do know that the State Board of Education is also going to do this training. They were going to do it, I think now they're doing it the end of January. There was a move, she had told me different times, but State Board of Education is going to go through this training, so Mike, as a representative on the State Board of Education, will go through it, but theirs will be geared a little more differently, less on what policies can affect student outcome, more on the types of issues that the State Board deals with rather than local districts. So I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have a whole lot of great details on what the training is because I haven't gone through it yet and I can, if you'd like, I can certainly give you any more information on that. I do know, one of the things that we usually question is what is the cost of this training? And so I asked Deb about that specifically. Last year, she applied for a grant through NASB and was able to provide it to the districts that went through it for a grant. They still had to pay for travel to where the training was located. I know Lyon County did it in Las Vegas with the Clark County School District when they went through it. So, but this year, her plan, which still has to be approved by NASB, but there's, NASB has some funds left over because they didn't do as much last year, but it has to be approved by the Board of Directors, but that's one of the things she's looking at, is providing this training for free for the remaining 12 districts in the state that need to, as a benefit of being a member of NASB. So we also, with the training being in Carson City, we wouldn't have any travel expenses, which would be helpful as well. We probably will need to provide our own lunch that day or those two days.
So will it be in person?
It will be, and so we will, that's, it'll be in person and we will have to socially distance and wear masks during the training.
So if they did five and there's 12, so there's seven other districts that have to go through the training?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
So you've said that there were five that already went through it, so there's 12 more districts that still have to do it?
Yes.
Is there any interest from other districts that have a board that doesn't function as well as ours?
So that's what Deb is looking into, and one of the things she is looking at is because Washoe County already did. She's trying to keep the trainings that we do this year for NASB local so that they can stay smaller and closer to where the boards are located, but there are three new trustees on Washoe County who have not gone through the training, so she was thinking to possibly invite them to our training at the same time.
So that's kind of my, my only reservation with this whole thing is because we are a pretty, across the state, we're probably the most efficiently run board and most progressive. I'm afraid that we're taking somebody's space that could use this training a lot more. I mean, we know from NASB that there are boards that, that don't come to even our trainings. And so that I'm thinking if the Board of Education is asking them to come, that it might be a bigger pull for some of these boards that don't have any training. I mean, we've, this board has attended almost every training and we have three, we had three representatives, two officers, so my, that's my only reservation. I don't have a problem with giving up a weekend for training. I just think that, given the situation and the time of the year, that it might be, another county could benefit a lot more than this board.
Okay, I can let Deb know if that's something, if our, our board would not like to. I know she was hoping to do some of the training and Washoe was, the three new board members on Washoe were who she was looking to include with that as well, so let me know what I should report to her if there's any.
So, sorry, Richard, can I get Mike? Mike has a question and then we'll go to Richard.
Well, I actually had more of a comment. I was, I talked to Deb today because one of the questions I was going to ask her, as Laurel said, I'll be going through this training at the end of this month with the Board of Education. And so I was asking her if there was any way we could have our training in conjunction because honestly, I'm really reluctant to give up two weekends for the same exact training. And the training for the Department of Ed is, I believe it's going to be on digital. It's going to be like over, over the internet. But they want their training to, the Board of Education wants theirs to be just the Board of Education, so they weren't able to do this in conjunction. So if the board does elect to go through the training, it's highly likely that I will have already gone through the training and I won't go through a second time. And so I just want to say that. And I don't know, I mean, I think that one of the things that's really nice about our board, and we all know this, we have our stuff together. We set goals with the community, we meet regularly with the community, we're focused on student achievement, and so I do think there's other places that probably would benefit for that training more than us. I can't, because there's a year-two component, according to people I've talked to in Lyon County, that is focused on goal-setting, and I feel like we already spend a lot of time doing that. And so if we do go through with this, I would really hope we could embed that into what we're already doing and maybe just make some tweaks to that process as opposed to adding on another layer for all of us.
Richard?
If we commit to doing the training, does that take it away from someone else?
I don't think it, I don't think there's any one scheduled. She's early in the year getting things scheduled, and I think for us being Carson City, right here close, it was like, oh, let's get you going, let's get you to, to set the example for it, starting. We do have trainings coming up throughout the year for, and there's going to be optional ones, which NASB's, the statutory ones. You want me to give you those dates now? But I don't think it's going to eliminate another board's opportunity to get this training, and I certainly can talk to her. If we have a date to work with, she can work to get another board to come with us and, because she said it does work better with two boards doing it because there's interaction and learning from both boards. So if that's something we'd be interested in doing, we can get that and then she can have a date to work with. I guess the question that becomes, which is not really our problem, it's her problem in figuring it out, is where to host it, where we have enough room to socially distance. And there's some rooms that are large enough here in the city.
Yeah, personally, I'm always in favor of more training, so I just leave it up to the board. I'm sorry, I said for myself, I'm always in favor of more training. I feel it's better, even if it's kind of redundant to something we've already had. I think there's always a value to it.
Any other board questions or comments? I guess one question I have, Laurel, is I understand the value of doing it in person, but odds are for doing it in Carson City, it's going to probably be in a casino, like at the Nugget upstairs or something. Is there, are they completely against doing it virtual or what's Deb's thoughts on that?
I think, I think there would be flexibility with that if that was something we really wanted, and I think, first of all, Deb was looking at free locations, perhaps if it was something, if it was, depending on the size, if it's something our district board room could, where we could do the training there. I also let her know about the Brewery Arts Center, the Upper Room there, which depends on what dates are available, if there's any dates that are, are better and what's available.
Or maybe Carson Hyde Gym, since we're not having winter sports.
That is, so yeah, but the location is yet to be determined depending on the dates. And I mean, I even told her about the annex at the Governor's Mansion that nonprofits can use for free, so that detail we don't know, so we could commit to a date and then still have some flexibility if the location doesn't work out, if that was something we wanted to do.
If there's no other discussion, this is for possible action. So if someone wants to make a motion or alter the motion, please speak now.
Do we need to choose the dates before we make the motion?
Well, I think it'd be helpful to give her two weekends that would work. Personally, I would say let's not do it President's Day weekend because it's President's Day weekend and people might have other plans. So that would be the 5th and 6th of February, the 12th and 13th, or the 26th and 27th. So three weekends.
And Laurel, one of the things we might want to point out is every board member has to commit, so everyone, including the superintendent, has to be available that day and attend the training. So that's something to keep in mind.
And you were saying the weekend, are we, are we Saturday and Sunday or Friday, Saturday?
Friday, Saturday. So personally, I don't have, since there are no sports, I don't have anything planned for any of those weekends at this time, so I'm available either. If there's anyone else who has a weekend that doesn't work?
Yeah, for me, the first weekend, the 5th doesn't work. I have to, my mom has a doctor's appointment that day, so I'll be out of town.
I'd be able to commit to all of them. Or any of them.
I am personally available any weekend.
So just so I'm clear, I, you know, I understand Mike's, Mike's point and I, you know, I agree with Richard that anytime we can get some training, I think if it's structured properly, it's, it's good, but if we, if the whole board has to commit and the superintendent has to commit and somebody from the board can't make it...
We can still do the training if somebody can't make it, and, and I think we have flexibility and understanding in this time that there's always the potential somebody may have to quarantine. If that happens, they can still do the training, it's just there's a certificate of completing it that if everyone goes through it, then we get the certificate, but if we don't get the certificate, but we get the value of it, that. So I think the, the weekends I wrote down that were most, because Joe said the 5th and 6th weren't, would be February 12th and 13th, or the 26th and 27th, as the two options. Does that sound good for everybody? Mr. Stokes, do you have any conflicts on those dates?
Questions on date?
Yeah, are you available on those?
I'm, I'm available. I believe that, and I don't know if this was from our last calendaring process, but I, I had a four-day weekend for the, the 12th, which is just prior to the President's Day weekend. Did we change that? Okay, so, so no, Trustee Crossman, I do not have any conflicts that I could not alter.
So I'd say if we're going to make a motion, we want to give Deb a little flexibility, so if we can say these two weekends, I assume we can make a motion with, you know, two weekends as, one's an alternative?
Absolutely.
And I guess I would just also say with this, yes, we're letting in that these dates are available, but we're not, we're not committing to, right, at this time, because there's so many things in play on to getting the location and everything. It may be something that she can't find a spot and maybe we need to do the training another month, but this, this gives her a couple of dates to work with if we're interested in doing it.
Okay, so do we have any more discussion or is someone ready to make a motion?
Let me find the motion. Okay. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees commit to attending the Silver State Governance Training Program on either the weekend of the 12th and 13th of February or the 26th and 27th of February.
I'll second that. Can I do that, even if I'm a presenter?
Can Laurel second it?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Trustee Varner, second by Trustee Crossman. Do we have any further board discussion? Richard, did we give you a chance to, did you have any questions or comments or are you good?
No, thank you, Mr. President, but I can make either of those dates work for my schedule.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment, Mr. Cassiopoul.
Okay, I'm hearing no public comment. I'll call the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing no opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Laurel. Okay, item 20, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Motion by Mike.
I'll second it.
Who is that? Richard second. Again, any board comment? Any public comment?
No public comment, Mr. Cassiopoul.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Again, skipping 21 and 22. However, I do want to make comment on item 22, which is request for future agenda topics. Just want to remind folks, if you're listening, if you have any thoughts on this, please submit emails to Renee and we will, we will get those. And with that, item 23 is adjournment. So thank you, everybody. It was an interesting meeting, but thanks for your time.